Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, August 1st, 2022. Council has been on recess for the month of July, so we're just coming back now to first a committee meeting tonight, where we're going to talk about some items that do pertain to the legislation that will be read then later on during the meeting. And it's good to see you all here tonight. I know there've been a number of issues that have come up and concerns in the community, so good to see you here. Glad to have you. So we'll start with the Finance Committee, and this is chaired by Councilmember Crowell and joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Ziff, and Spielness. And we'll give those council members, they'll stay here up on the dais, and you may see them. The other council members who are not on that committee do go and sit at the other table while we have that committee meeting. And then they'll rejoin us in just a few minutes.
Okay, thank you, President Isley. We have a couple of items on our committee agenda tonight, a couple of projects, a couple of staffing issues, and some appropriations. The first item on our agenda, our City Hall renovations. This is project number 356. For those who are not aware of the age of the building that we sit in, it is coming up on 150. And the city administration is looking at bringing the building back to some of its former glory and has a four-phase project that they are recommending connected to this building. And the most probably needed item for the work of city administration and city council and all commissions and boards is an update to the conference rooms on the first floor. So this would be Phase 1 of this project. Again, it is connected into four phases, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Stone here in just a minute, but all of these would be funded from the capital fund from 580, and starting with the conference rooms. And there will be some proposed reorganizing of staff offices on the first floor that'll go along with the conference rooms, which we'll get into a little bit later in the meeting today. Phase 2 is to bring Hebe, am I saying that correct? Hebe, who's my...
Hebe.
Hebe, thank you very much. Hebe from the water treatment plant back up to Athens City Hall. And there's lots of interesting stories about how she ended up down there and some of the stories around. I'm not sure if everyone even knows that this beautiful statue is down in the water treatment plant. If you've not visited her, well, Phase 2 would be to bring her back up here. Phase 3 would actually to put our bell back into the bell tower on the building and have it be a working bell. And Phase 4 would be some tuckpointing, some masonry repairs to the exterior of this brick building. So all four of these projects, rough estimate, about somewhere in the vicinity of $300,000. Right now, city administration is requesting $75,000, which will cover the design work for this project for all four phases and also cover Phase 1. So they estimate that the renovations to the conference rooms will be somewhere under $50,000, probably around $45,000. But the design work for all of the projects will bring it up in the 60s. And then the project request does not yet include the furniture. It's just construction. So adding the furniture, they're asking for $75,000 now for this project. Are there any questions on my little introduction there? We can get more information from the mayor and from Mr. Stone.
I'd like to shine a...
Please.
I think you hit all the high points perfectly. Again, as one of the phases, you can see up there, the bell tower, that one is going to be significant in that the bell, when I took office, the bell was sitting in a storage facility somewhere. And we brought that forward, brought it out, and it was for public display for several years. What we would like to do is return the bell to the bell tower. We would also like to return arms on the four-phase clock and put digital mechanisms inside there so that we have a functional clock, like was the case 150 years ago. So, I mean, Hebe, as you mentioned, I've had a lot of the public reach out to me and say, it would sure be nice to see Hebe again. People who remember Hebe at the water fountain that was in front of the county courthouse. That's where she originally stood for many years. And there is a really interesting story. We may have to hire a shaman to take the curse off of Hebe, but we'll see. But again, this is in recognition that there is 150-year anniversary of this facility and being the stewards that we are of this public trust, to redo the building, put the tuckpointing work, is one more thing to get this building treated the way it should be, like we do with all our buildings, like the armory and this facility as well.
Okay. Any questions for the mayor on this project?
Just a quick question. So how did you decide which is Phase 1 versus 2, 3, and 4? Is there...
It was really the easier things to get done is how we phased it this way. The conference room, we've known for quite some time that that's the place in which we have dignitaries and officials come in. It's tired and sad-looking. It's time to get an upgrade in that room. We've reached out to BDT to see, you know, design-wise, what could we do in that space. So that's an easier thing to get moving. There's going to have to be quite a bit of planning for Hebe, because Hebe is fragile. So we'll have to do a fair amount of planning with her positioning across from the utility building in this building. And the bell tower is another one where we're going to have to do a lot of planning and also do some structural integrity work to make sure that our bell tree can still maintain the weight of our bell. Our bell was cast, I believe it was a year before this building was dedicated. And it's an extremely heavy bell, so a lot of planning to be done with it. And the tuckwork, we wanted to do that last, it was the last thing. We know that that is pretty straightforward to get that accomplished, so there's no real race to get the tuckwork done, but we need to get done.
Thank you.
Member Reisner? You planning on expanding the conference room in size?
Sorry?
Do you plan to expand, make it larger, conference room?
Oh, the conference room? No, no, the footprint will stay the same. Right now, it has, what, six or eight oak tables that are really wide to begin with, so it eats up a lot of space. So we'll get a properly-sized conference room table that will still seat 14 individuals so that we will be able to create a little bit more room by just getting the right-sized conference room table.
Other questions from the committee, other members of council? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, the solar project. The city administration has discovered from AEP that we will need an upgrade in the transformer that will receive the power from the solar panel project and transfer, if I understand correctly, to the wastewater treatment plant. So the current transformer that would be between the panels and our city infrastructure is not large enough to be able to handle the solar. So AEP indicates that they need $79,000 from the city for this transformer upgrade. And one thing that has been discussed in the city administration is where this money will come from. Mayor, do you want to provide additional information? Engineer Stone?
Sure. Thank you, Member Crowell. The upgrade to that transformer is the difference in cost. Just a replacement of the transformer. That transformer is owned by American Electric Power, so it would be their cost if they were to replace it themselves. This is the difference in cost of replacement and then an upside. So we're not buying it outright, basically. That's one note. Our thought is this is an appropriate expenditure for the money that has been building at SOPEC as part of a carbon fee that the voters enacted several years ago. That money is specifically for community solar projects. That's what it's supposed to be for. And this is our first significant community solar project since that has been put in place. And so that money is built. Our thinking is that we will request a disbursement from that, that will be remitted to the city, and then subsequently the city will appropriate the money. We'll work through the mechanics of how to do that. Given that this particular transformer is necessarily the waste water our sewer plant probably needs to get through the sewer fund, but, you know, the mechanisms to do that is a thing that we'll work through between now and when we introduce an ordinance. The one other note on the solar project update is as the body may be aware, since the time that we awarded and selected the design-build firm for this project, which was Third Sun Solar, they merged with Kokosik. And so they became a much larger company, basically, by doing that. And there's a couple of different options that we will have to consider when it comes to how we are going to pay for this. The option that we always were pursuing from the very beginning, and you've been briefed on a couple times since we initiated the project, was to do a power purchase agreement where an investor will go and build it, and then we will purchase power from that investment and then investors then have the option to buy out the array after the tax credit provision period of time is realized, which is about six to seven years. Because of just, you know, more capability and more frankly backing of capital that Kokosik has, there is the option that we could conceivably lease from them. They could build it and then have the same terms with the opportunity to buy out at the other end. And, you know, as opposed to having a, you know, some third-party, you know, investor somewhere to have an Ohio company as an entity that is functionally lending us the money or building it and leasing it to us, and then we buy out from it. Might be something we would want to consider as we pursue this. But at the end of the day, it'll be what is most financially beneficial for the city of Athens. Hopefully that... And unfortunately, I don't have those numbers yet. They're working on those, you think they'll hopefully be ready to bring forward an ordinance on both of these items here within the latter half of the month.
And I believe we may invite Mr. Greenfield or Mrs. Greenfield back to speak to some of this from the third son.
They'll have to explain that shift, basically, what transpired, and maybe we'll make sure that they don't take too much time.
Okay, great. Any questions from the committee on the solar power and the need for the transformer, other members of council? Yes, Member Swank?
What would be the new timeline on the project?
That's what I keep pushing on our design-build forum to promote. So I'd like to see construction happening still this year, but I'm not particularly hopeful with that. So my gut feel is we'll really see construction going in the spring.
Other questions from other members? Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, staffing. We have a couple of staffing issues to discuss. The first is a request by the city administration to add a part-time receptionist in the mayor's office. This would be a permanent part-time position, so, you know, roughly 20 to 29 hours per week, certainly under 30 hours per week. It's a non-union position that would report to the executive secretary. It's to alleviate some of the issues that anybody who's come up to visit the mayor's office has with the number of people who are, have full-time regular jobs that are dealing with those of us who come up to ask questions or need to speak to someone behind the glass doors, et cetera. A lot of phone calls that come into the auditor's office or into other offices in the city that they don't have a central sort of area to refer those calls, to find out who somebody should speak to. And so the city administration is hopeful that this position will sort of alleviate some of those issues with the public in the mayor's office. This is a pay grade 1 position. Any questions from the committee on these other members of council? Anything to add, Mayor?
The only thing that I would say is that, you know, one of the things we discussed the other day is that, you know, the city government is close to the people and we're accessible. And so we receive the inquiries that, any manner of inquiries that may or may not be pertinent to the city. And so it's something that we pride ourselves on as being able to help people solve their problems. We can't solve it for them, at least get them to the place where they need to have their problem addressed. Whereas I don't think at the state and federal level, you can either walk in or pick up the phone and call and talk to a person right away and at least have someone service your issue. And so this would be extremely helpful for us to be able to continue to provide that level of service that our citizens expect. An example today is I had a citizen call and a staff member worked with the citizen for probably 30 minutes because he was extremely angry at the sheriff's department. And he had been turned away by the sheriff's department and by other entities inside the county and, you know, understanding that there's absolutely nothing that the city of Athens can do about his particular issue. But it's just not our practice to go and hang up on people and say, well, sorry, it's not what we do here, and send them away. So we really try to at least get them in the right direction if we can't solve the problem. And this position will help us do that without sucking up all the time of the staff that have other jobs.
Mayor? I'll just add one more thing. You know, Amy Brink, whose desk is right there, works, you know, for HR. She's the assistant within the HR department. And the disruptions that she experiences, because she's right there, you know, this will certainly help with that towards someone whose job is to greet the public when they come up to the window or when they call and they can be routed. The other thing, just so council knows, is that we've consolidated the HR department to where they're not kind of spread out on the first floor, to where now the HR director, Lucas, has an office in the back of the building, as does Amy, who'll be sitting in what was the small conference space. And that will be turning Ron's office into that small conference space. So both conference rooms will be well-suited in great locations, the front of the building when people come in. So this will help, because with Amy's shift, she won't be there tag-teaming with Tanya Baker. Tanya's the other one who's having to field a lot of calls, and she carries, you know, a lot of the workload for the service safety director. And Amy, like I said, is HR. So this is much needed to have someone whose sole purpose is to be the public-facing person at that desk to receive people when they come in. And for those that aren't aware, the former director of HR's office is on the first floor just as you enter into the building, just through the double doors. So more accessible. The back mayor's small conference room is also accessible, but this will be certainly more accessible. So both conference rooms will be closer to one another and more open to the public and those of us who use them. Any other questions? Okay, the other staffing issue we have on our agenda tonight is authorizing retroactive pay for the pool manager. I believe everyone is aware, or the council is aware, that we authorized an increase in the hourly rate for our pool manager. However, and we intended to pay her that rate for the duration of her employment, meaning retroactively. But the ordinance that we passed only authorized from the moment that the ordinance was approved. And so we're looking at about six weeks of pay. I think it amounts to a little over $200. That is what we intended, I believe, when we originally hired her into that position. So this is an ordinance that fixes that issue and gives her that retroactive pay back to her start date. And it's important that we pass this efficiently because as a seasonal position, it will impact her pension or benefits if this doesn't fix before her last pay. Now, we still have dog swim, we still have a little bit of summer, we still have dog swim, we still have weatherization, right, winterization. So she'll be on for a little bit, but we need to move this through. And any questions from the committee, other members of council? Anything to add, administration? Okay. I believe that that... No, no, now into appropriations. Okay, sorry, I knew I couldn't just get out of here that easily. All right. So now we do have a rather lengthy appropriation list. City administration has done some difficult but very needed work to figure out how much our gas and our fuel costs that have risen have impacted our budgets, right? So we haven't, you know, allocated enough at the beginning of the year into individual fund lines to have enough money to pay for these increases that we've seen in gas and fuel. And then there's some other things involved here. But the city administration has done a very careful look across all of our departments, lands and buildings, police fire code, parking, street maintenance, recreation, water maintenance, sewer, wastewater treatment plant, litter control, and internal service, and has figured out what we will need to add to those budgets through the end of the year in order to cover the additional costs from things like fuel. And so the appropriations are appropriating from the unappropriated balance, $11,500, which covers $6,500 for natural gas increases and $5,000 for also custodial supplies. There is an appropriation of $84,200, which you can look at the ordinance online if you're interested in what the increases are to each individual of those departments, which I've read. There is also an appropriation for $31,500 for... $30,000 for COVID sewage testing that we have been doing with the university as a partnership to get advance warning of upticks in the return of these masks. We, there's an appropriation for two years of a grant from the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council. These are $750 grants, so together $1,500 that will be used for the Athens Community Music Festival. There is some appropriations to the recreation fund to cover some year-end costs that have been higher due to inflation, as well as some pool and some reorganization of the local soccer fields, some surveying that's been done down on the West Street Park in order to sign a deal with the university to use that property for the adult soccer organization. There was a grant received from the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau for a production at Arts West this summer called Fun Home. And then there was also a $2,000 donation by Fiona Avocado, who's an artist, to support the PRISM after-school program at Arts West. There are, again, the funds that were needed to finish up the agreement with the university about use of the area along the driving range, the soccer fields that I was mentioning previously. There was a receipt of a childcare grant from the state of Ohio in the amount of $5,715, and that will also be appropriated to the community center fund. All of these details are in ordinance 9822 that is in our drive for tonight when we get to our regular meeting. Are there any questions about any of these ordinance? There's a lot of information. And I kind of went through it quickly, but please, committee, if you have any questions about anything? Other members of council, Member Swank?
One of the more popular topics on social media and in the newspapers the last eight weeks has been the price of gasoline in Athens, Ohio. Mr. Stone, our gas, do we buy it by the year on a contract? Or how do we purchase gas for the vehicles that we need to use in the operation of the city?
Thank you, Member Swank. So the fuel for the city fleet, you know, and 99% of it, other than in instances of someone were traveling too far and would need to fuel at a regular fueling station, is purchased from Ohio University. And they purchase their fuel in bulk and then subsequently have pumps that have both diesel and regular. And our staff have keys that are assigned to both the staff member and the vehicle number, and you go and you put that in. And so you keep track of demand by department, and that allows us to backcharge the individual departments. So it's not a locked-in price for the year. You know, they have an arrangement, and they just basically pass the same cost as what they're buying it at to the city, plus a small, I think it's around 2% management fee, basically, that then we also pay. So it's a sliding scale, so just as we see it slide inside the, you know, the retail fuel market, they get it as well. Now, I don't know, like, to say that it's at 80% of what you are typically seeing at the pump, but it is lower than what you're seeing at the pump. It's not significantly lower, but it's, you know, probably 15, 20% lower than you'd see the pump, because they're buying it in bulk.
Thank you.
Anything else to add to the administration on this long list of appropriations? Okay, well, that will end Finance and Personnel, President Isley.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowell. And if our other councilmembers will rejoin us, we'll begin our regular session of council. There are a few more seats. If you can raise your hand if you've got a seat available next to you, then we can get everybody seated. That would be a help, because we can't block the entrance way. Thank you so much. Well, welcome to our regular business session. We have a number of business items that we'll be going through first, and I understand that some of you will be wanting to speak to us after the regular business session, when you have the opportunity for citizens to speak. Our first item of business is establishing a quorum. All members of council are present tonight. Our next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held on June 21st and the special session held on June 28th, 2022. If I could have a motion for approval of these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. And second, others in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion is approved and motion passes, and the minutes have been approved. Next, we have communications. I have three items tonight. The first one being a TREX application. This is a variation of, it's a form of a liquor permit. And in this particular case, what happens with the TREX is when there is a liquor license that is not being used in another area, another municipality in the state, then at the request of the business, then either the mayor or a member of city council can bring forward this TREX request. And so the business that is no longer using this permit is Tranquil Lady and Patio, and that's in Whitehall, Ohio. And the permit for which they're moving this to, to TREX it, is Ohio University doing business at Athena Cinema up here on South Court Street. And they have applied for a D1, D2, and D3 permits. Very briefly, D1 allows beer only on the premises and consumption or concealed containers for carryout. D2 is wine and mixed beverages on the premises or sealed container for carryout. And D3 is spiritus liquor on the premises only until 1:00 a.m. And so we have received this application. Council would have, if they wanted to raise questions about it, until the 15th of August to respond to the Department of Commerce. And council members were provided by our law director, Eliason, with an explanation of TREX as an economic development tool. So, uh, that's my first uh communication. The second one uh is a, a positive kind of comment that we received from a citizen who lives in another city who visited our cemetery a few weeks ago. And uh, I know Mr. Swank has known this, this individual for years. Uh, Terry Gilkey is a part-time Cemetery Association employee, part-time employee of the city. And when he was asked by the people visiting from out of town, um, you know, he uh, it, for some assistance, he gladly stopped mowing and trimming and located uh the, the family's uh cemetery plot and was very helpful. And so we received a letter back, and uh, it's nice to get that kind of comment, and we want to thank Mr. Gilkey. Um, I think it's exemplary of the kind of employees that the city has, just as you're a person who took a half hour to talk with somebody about being upset about the sheriff. Yes, councilmember Swank?
And if I could take it one step further, Mr. Gilkey um has been very instrumental for many, many, many years uh in spearheading efforts to um attempt to restore to the best of his ability and other volunteers' ability many of the cemetery areas on the ridges. Uh, but he's done this out of goodness's heart and uh, just a real gem here in Athens.
Thank you. The third communication item is more of a public notice for anyone in Athens County that on October one at the Athens County Fairgrounds, uh, if you have tires, scrap metal, e-waste, or items in need of shredding, that there will be a, a recycling event on that day uh from nine AM to one PM at the Athens County Fairgrounds, October one. Are there communications from other council members? Okay, communications from other, other elected officials. Law Director Eliason?
I have one. Um, if you recall, in June, council requested a hearing before liquor control regarding the Mithral uh application for a liquor permit. And a hearing was scheduled July twentieth. On June twenty-fourth, the common police court issued a decision and found in favor of Mithral. So based on that, um, I made a motion to the liquor control to withdraw our request for a hearing, and I just wanted council to know that.
Thank you, Law Director. Communications from Mayor Patterson?
A few things for council tonight. Uh, just as a reminder, there will be a street closing this weekend um with Bounty on the Bricks taking place on Court Street. And then the following Saturday, the thirteenth, there will be another street closing, which will be West Union between Congress and Court Street for the Athens Arts and Music Festival. Um, so just beware that that's going on. Um, I uh want to share with council a really pleasant thank you letter that I received with the street repaving down on Cook Drive. Um, one of the residents down there was certainly appreciative of the work that went into that. Um, we've been busy since council has been on recess. Uh, we've been busy in the world of print media. Um, there was an article that came out in Business View um in the tail end of June showcasing the city of Athens. Um, they interviewed me and, and uh chose our community to be showcased. Uh, we also had a short article that came out after an interview that I had with the New York Times. They were very interested in carbon, uh, decarbonization efforts that communities are going through, and they were certainly intrigued with the, the carbon fee um that the citizens of Athens voted to by seventy-six percent. So they wrote a short story about us and several other cities across the nation. And the last thing I want to share with councils, we got some great news the other day, and I shared it with you already, but worth saying uh on live TV, and that is that the city of Athens was chosen to be one of five cities showcased as the best hometown here in the state of Ohio by Ohio Magazine. So that'll be coming out um later this month, and then it'll come out again in the summer. Actually, it'll be in the fall of this year, and then it'll come out again in the spring of twenty-twenty-three. Um, we're in some uh really good company, in my opinion. Um, Athens, Bell Fountain, Kent, Perrysburg, and Versailles um are the five communities that are being showcased. And this is, this is a, a newspaper that is well-read, um especially in the tourism world. So uh, it's great that the city of Athens was chosen. I have received several emails and, and postcard. I got a postcard this morning from the former um chair of the Ohio Mayors Association congratulating the city of Athens for getting into said newspaper. So uh, just want council to be aware of that.
Thank you. Okay. Auditor Heck, yes?
I'd like to give an update on our tax refunds um and mention where we are as far as, as uh revenue collection at this point. Um, we did about fifteen refunds in July, which means they've slowed down for the year. However, um, we are at the point, we started the year with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars appropriated for refunds for the year, which is a hundred thousand dollars more than we've uh ever budgeted in my time. And um, then I asked for another two hundred thousand, and then I asked for another two hundred thousand. And so we have passed the first appropriate, the, the amount for the first appropriation of two hundred thousand. Right now, we are at five hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. And um, people are curious about this, but we have two hundred, what we call normal refunds, for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and four hundred and twenty-eight work-from-home refunds for four hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So um, and they still are trickling in. When people ask for refunds, there's no deadline for us to uh, to do that. Um, so we're just into that other amount, and then just a reminder um that um in October, there'll be um, you know, the extensions for taxes will be filed. And um, last year, we um, um, processed about fifty thousand in refunds um in October into November of last year. So we expect to see at least that much this year again. So that gives you an idea of where we are. And at this point in the year, we were down about a hundred and twenty-six thousand from our total um collections, um mostly in withholdings because people now who are only working from home or working even at a hybrid schedule, um, they're not having the withholdings um taken out, and that will probably continue. So um, that's where we are.
Uh, auditor Heck, by way of explanation, so the refunds that you are issuing from your office are because of a change in the state law, correct?
The, the majority of them are.
Majority of them are?
Yes, yes. So that people um who work from home, um, which isn't exactly, well, it is sort of a change because we were allowed to continue to withhold from them for the first um year of COVID. And then um, now we don't, as we wouldn't for anybody else in past years. If you weren't living or working in the city of Athens, you don't have to pay the local taxes, income tax. So um, so now we have a lot more people not working in the city, and um, they have had, um, majority of businesses have gone ahead and withheld last year. And so now they, they're getting refunds because they're either not working at all in the city or they're only working part-time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to ordinances for a third reading. And Councilmember Grace is recusing herself from the discussion and the vote on this item. This is eighty-five twenty-two, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title Twenty-nine, Housing Regulations, Chapter twenty-nine point three-six, Prohibited Actions. To add, Section twenty-nine point three-six point zero-two, tenants' rights, right to pay to stay. And this is introduced by Councilmember Ziff.
Thank you, President Nisley. Um, I would like to move to amend eighty-five twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you, Member Crowell. Um, so this amendment, I believe everybody has a copy of it in front of them. Um, this is adding um, uh, just a couple of words uh seven different times throughout this ordinance. What it's doing is, the, the previous iteration of it had it uh just listed as, as the form of tender. It just listed reasonable attorney's fees. Um, I don't know if, if anybody else was following, but the uh, the case over in Cincinnati was upheld, and this was constitutionally okay for them to have. Um, so one of the motivations of this is to make ours match theirs a little bit more. It's already been proven that it's constitutional, so it sort of gives us a slight leg up, if you will, um, if an attorney, local attorney, wanted to challenge it. And it also just adds a little bit of specificity. Um, and it's just to, it, all it's adding is to, uh, not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five dollars after reasonable attorney's fees.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion and second? Are there any comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Swank?
Is this um one hundred and twenty-five dollars per occurrence? Uh, yes, okay, yeah.
Other questions or comments? And do we have any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion and second for amending eighty-five twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries. This ordinance has been amended, and when an ordinance is amended, then it goes back to the first reading. So as we say, it's been read for the first time. So we, two additional readings later in our month. Eighty-six twenty-two is an ammen, an ordinance amending Chapters seven point zero-five, Parking Regulations. And if you could let Councilmember Grace know, oh, there she is. Okay. She got the timing right on that. Okay, so this, now we're reading for the third reading. Ordinance eighty-six twenty-two, this is an ordinance amending Chapters seven point zero-five, Parking Regulations, and seven point zero-six Tow Truck Regulations in Athens City Code Title Seven, Traffic Code. And this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt eighty-six dash twenty-two.
Second.
Um, this ordinance has been discussed uh quite a bit in the past. Um, this is drug on for several years, actually. Um, we've heard from uh our law department, and we've heard from citizens. Um, it's been discussed in committee. Um, allow me to just read it again. It's a short ordinance. Uh, whereas pursuant to Ohio Revised Code forty-five thirteen point six zero one, the Public Utilities Commission establishes the fees for service for vehicle removal from private towaway zones. And whereas pursuant to Ohio Revised Code forty-nine twenty-one point twenty-five, Section A, any person, company, or corporation that is engaged in the towing of motor vehicles is subject to regulation by the Public Utilities Commission. Um, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section forty-five thirteen point six zero, forty-five thirteen point six zero one, and forty-nine twenty-one point twenty-five, Athens City Code Title Seven, Traffic Code, Chapter seven point zero-five, Parking Regulations, and Chapter seven point zero-six Tow Tuck Regulations are hereby amended to read as attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. Thank you.
Okay, and we have a motion and second? Yes, councilmembers Frank?
Uh, Madam President, I move to refer O eighty-six twenty-two back to committee. Second to you?
Okay, and Law Director Eliason, do we need to have a vote on approving before we refer it back to committee?
Well, we did have a motion and a second.
So we have to move on that first. So in order for that to be considered, we have to have the vote, the vote to approve the or, or not approve the ordinance. So is there any further discussion at the moment on, yes, councilmember Swank?
In that case, I got my Roberts Rules about order out of order. Um, the reason that I offered that, I can't do this with masks on. The reason I offered that uh motion to refer back to committee, actually, two reasons. Number one, in the last month, I've had an opportunity to do a little investigating and have discovered that there are some communities that have actually put out for bid uh their tow, towing operations for non-private tows. Now, a private tow is a tow from a lot, and we see them all over town with the signs of who to call and how much it's going to cost you. Non-private tows are when someone's car needs to be removed, generally at the request of a, a resident. Somebody parks in your driveway for more than four hours, uh, they can be towed. Uh, or uh, you know, blocking traffic on a city thoroughfare or something like that. The point has been made that uh we can't charge what we currently have on the books because nobody will tow. Well, I think one way to find out that would happen or not is to put it out to bid. I, I'm a retired independent businessman, and anytime I had an opportunity to bid on something, I would weigh very carefully, would it be worth my time to do it at the price prescribed? Let's let the market decide that. Let's put it out for bid. Let's see what we get, and let's see what happens. If we find out that nobody bids on it, at least we gave it a try. But if we find out that we can actually have cars towed for less than a hundred and twenty-nine dollars, thus saving all of you money, maybe that's a good thing. Don't get me wrong, though. I'm not saying we shouldn't tow vehicles. If you illegal, illegally park, and the lots are marked, and the people who own the property have followed the law, then you violated the law. Second thing, we often talk about local control. We often talk about local control. In doing the research on this towing, I made multiple phone calls to Columbus, to PUCO, the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. And only because I dug and dug and dug and dug was I able to get to the individual who was in charge of towing for the state of Ohio. Very nice man. And he wanted to know what my complaint was. I said, sir, I'm not calling for a complaint today. I'm calling for information. Some of you, maybe me, find ourselves in a position where we need to complain, though, about our tow. I came here in nineteen seventy-nine to interview for a graduate assistant position in the College of Education, Kraken Hall. Couldn't find a legal parking spot. Drove round and round and round and round. Finally found one gravel lot across from Pickering Hall on the South Green. There were no signs. There were other cars parked there. Nobody had any stickers on their cars. It seemed like a safe place for my wife and I to leave our car while I took an interview in McCracken Hall. Came back an hour and a half later, and you guessed it, my car was gone. Went back to McCracken Hall, and I said, oh, yeah, Jerry's got you. We used to have an operation here in town called Jerry's Towing out on Columbus Road. So they took me out there, and it cost me eighteen dollars. This is a lot of money back then for a first-year school teacher. I got home, and my dad said, how'd you pay for it? I said, well, I was able to convince the guy to let me write him a check. He said, call your bank. Spend a dollar, save seventeen. Stop payment on that check. They called me up, threatened me and everything else, and I pointed out to them, you know what? There's no sign on that lot. See me in court. The fact that I was able to handle that locally myself is not a luxury everybody has. But if you get towed here locally, again, non-private lot, and you have a problem, and perhaps it was an illegal uh tow, who are you going to call? Who are you going to call? Wouldn't it make sense if we licensed towing here locally that you had somebody here in this town, a town that we've heard today, and I agree with the mayor one hundred percent, prides itself on the human interaction and contact, rather than trying to make multiple calls, punch forty-seven times, number two, number three, number five, number seven, do you speak English? Do you speak another language? And to hope you get a hold of somebody in Columbus. So for those two reasons, I would like to send this back to committee. And I'll vote no on this, so we have an opportunity to send it back to committee.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, be honest.
Uh, thank you, and uh, thank you, Councilmember Swank. I too have done some digging on this, and I looked up uh the towing ordinances in all the cities I could think of in Ohio that were comparable to ours. And I think there was maybe fifteen. Some of them were smaller, some of them were larger, some of them were about our size. And all the cities I could find that were about our size had some kind of towing ordinance. And also, what I saw, and also what um was mentioned here, is that there is provisions that protect the public for situations where, as uh Councilmember Swank experienced, was really not in his favor. And you need something to protect the population. I've been asking people about their experiences, and they will tell me about it or friends of mine about it, but they're afraid to come forward to talk about how bad their experiences are. In part because some of them feel as though they're bolder of populations, they're afraid of reprisals, they're afraid of the police, they're just have some concerns. they're afraid of the police, they're just have some concerns. And, and so I think that we need to do a better job of writing ordinances that work. So I, too, in favor of this. Thank you.
Other councilmembers, comments, questions? Other elected officials, administration, any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the audience?
Uh, Damon Train, Hudson Avenue. Um, I wanted to thank members Billness and Swank for pointing out that council's really been presented with a false choice here, that either we have to keep the current ordinance as is, which with its fees that haven't been updated in over two decades, um, and with the situation where the city administration refuses to enforce it, or we've got to relinquish all local authority to regulate towing. And those have never been the only two options. Other cities regulate towing locally, and there are different ways that you can do it. Uh, for instance, the bidding scenario that councilmember Swank rose. Um, so, but I think there's an even more basic issue that needs to be addressed, which is why we're even talking about this in the first place. The latest news coverage of the towing issue was the July seventeenth W O U B article that I hope you all had a chance to read. It reported, quote, Athens Police Chief Tom Pyle and Law Director Lisa Eliason brought a recommendation to councilmember Jeff Reisner to get rid of local towing regulations. And why did the chief and law director do this? Well, as Chief Pyle explained in the very next sentence, quote, "Our entire efforts have been to reduce our liability exposure for having ordinances that aren't enforced." So there you have it. According to Chief Pyle, that's all this current ordinance has ever been about, reducing his liability exposure and the liability exposure of other city administrators. The ordinance has never been about creating good public policy that's in the best interest of city residents. Instead, it's been about trying to protect city administrators from being held accountable for not doing their jobs, for breaking local and state law, and for enabling illegally unlicensed towing operators to collect millions of dollars in illegally high fees over an eight-year period. So let me illustrate this by way of analogy. As though Chief Pyle was speeding down the highway one day, and when he saw the flashing lights approaching in his rearview, he thought to himself, uh-oh, looks like I've got some liability exposure. So he put the pedal to the floor and tried to make a break for it. And when he was finally pulled over, he said, hey, what's the problem, officer? I was just trying to reduce my liability exposure. So here we are tonight, and the effort to reduce the administration's liability exposure is up for a vote. And each of you has a very important choice to make. Will you vote yes, and tell us all that you think the job of a city council member is to try to cover up the wrongdoing of fellow office holders? Or will you vote no, and tell us instead that you think the job of a city council member is to create good public policy in the best interest of city residents? I hope you'll vote wisely. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Swank?
Uh, Madam President, I have a point of order. Reading from our rules of council, Rule number sixteen, I quote, "When a motion is before the council, or under debate, and before the president orders a vote to be taken, no motion shall be received except amendments to the main motion and the following listed motions." My motion to refer to committee is one of those listed as an exception. I think we need to vote on that first.
Where do you see that? I have, um-
Page five.
Well, I have it in front of me, but which section is that?
Rule sixteen. It lists ten things, then what I read, and then the following, to the main motion, and the following listed motions. And the listed motions are listed A through G, which there's no debate permitted. And motions with debate permitted, A through E, and refer to committee is letter C.
All right, so you're saying that what you have is a, an amendment to the main motion?
No, I have a motion, um, I have a motion, uh, to refer to committee.
Okay. It's, well, I'm reading it, no motion shall be received except amendments to the main motion.
And the following listed motions, and they are listed there.
Right.
Divided into two categories, motions where there is no debate, and refer to committee is listed under motions where debate is permitted.
Right, and looking at that, I do agree with you. Um, it says amendments to the main motion and the following listed motion. And then there is a Section One and a Section Two, motions with no debate, and then motions with debate permitted. So, um, I'm going to withdraw what I said previously, and I think that that's how we handled a previous situation that, um, at this point, the president has not ordered a vote to be taken. So from our own rules, um, apparently we can, or you can make an amendment to the main motion and the following listed motion. So if you wish to make that, then.
So you've made a motion to refer to committee, and do we have a second on that, with that councilmember Billness? Okay. Oh, it was councilmember McCary, excuse me, okay.
Two seconds.
So we will vote on that motion to refer to committee. And if you would, please raise your hand, all those in favor of referring the motion to committee. Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll refer it back to committee. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to ordinances for second reading. And what we typically do is read the title of the ordinance, see if there are any comments or questions or updates. I'll pause briefly to ask if there are any, and then I'll move on and read the title to the next ordinance. So these ordinances for second reading, the first one is ninety-four twenty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, to administer the Athens Public Transit Bus System. And this is introduced by councilmember Reisner. If no updates or questions or comments, we'll move on to ordinance ninety-five twenty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, as contract administrator for the Ohio Rural Intercity Bus Program, known as Go Bus. And that's introduced by councilmember Reisner. And if no updates or questions or comments. Ninety-six twenty-two is our next ordinance, and this is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a mutual assistance agreement with the South Central Ohio Major Crimes Unit. And this is introduced by councilmember McCary. And if no updates or questions or comments, we will move on now to our ordinances for first reading. And what typically happens on these ordinances for first reading is the person who is introducing the ordinance gives a brief explanation. Ninety-eight twenty-two is an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. Um, as discussed at committee, uh, this ordinance covers, uh, many items. Um, uh, and I'll just sort of recap, um, the, uh, the items we discussed. Um, eleven thousand five hundred dollars to the general fund lands and buildings for citywide natural gas increased costs and citywide custodial supplies. Thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars to the general fund for COVID sewage testing, and for fifty hundred dollars for a grant received from NOPEC to support the Athens Arts and Music Festival. Uh, eighty-four thousand two hundred dollars to various funds for fuel costs. Those funds were listed during our committee meeting. Fifteen thousand three hundred dollars to the recreation fund, uh, to cover year-end costs due to inflation, pool and soccer expenses. Um, a grant received from the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau for the Arts West Fun Home Production, and a donation by Fiona Avocado. Thank you very much, an artist to support the Prism After School Program at Arts West. Eight thousand three hundred dollars to the recreation fund for survey and a legal description of the area at the West State Street Park for the Athens, Ohio Soccer Organization, Adult Soccer League, and also Youth Use Facility. Uh, five thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars to the community center. Uh, that's a receipt of a childcare stabilization grant from the state. Thank you, President Isley.
Any other, any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to ordinance ninety-
Questions?
Yes.
I just have a quick question, that is, um, I'm curious about the childcare stabilization grant at the community center. What's that?
I don't have any additional information on that. I don't know if the city administration does.
No, but we can provide that information to you.
Yeah, I mean, childcare is such an important issue, and I just would really love to know more, and other people might as well. So, thank you.
Oh, absolutely, go for it.
Okay, we'll move on to, if no other questions or comments, we'll move on to ordinance ninety-nine twenty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing retroactive pay for the pool manager, and is introduced by councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'll go ahead and read this, as discussed at committee. Uh, whereas ordinance seventy-eight twenty-two authorized increasing the hourly rate from thirteen dollars to three dollars above, to sixteen dollars to four dollars above. And whereas the pool manager was hired April twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, at an hourly rate of sixteen dollars. Section one, Athens City Council does hereby authorize a retroactive payment for the pool manager from April twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the hire date, to July sixth, twenty twenty-two, the effective date of ordinance seventy-eight twenty-two, from sixteen to eighteen dollars per hour. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? If none, we'll move on to ordinance one hundred twenty-two. This is an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two staffing levels and compensation authorized by ordinance one forty-one twenty-one, to add a part-time receptionist in the mayor's office. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Isley. As discussed at committee, I'll go ahead and read Section one. The two thousand twenty-two staffing levels and compensation authorized by ordinance one forty-one twenty-one is hereby amended to add a part-time receptionist, pay grade one, in the mayor's office. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance one oh one twenty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to accept bids where necessary and entered into contract for design and construction of city hall renovations. This will be project number three fifty-six, Phase One Conference Rooms, introduced by councilmember Crowell.
Uh, thank you, President Isley. Section one repeats, uh, the title that we just heard, uh, and as discussed at committee, I'll read Section two. The two thousand twenty-two appropriation ordinance one fifty dash twenty-one is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars for cap- two Capital Improvements Fund, five eighty, point five eighty, for design and construction of project three fifty-six, Phase One Conference Rooms. Section three, the Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to seventy-five thousand dollars from the Capital Improvements Fund for said project number three fifty-six, Phase One Conference Rooms. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, any comments or questions? Yes, councilmember Swank?
I just have a quick question for Mr. Stone, uh, from my own edification, and also since we have such a large group assembled today, a chance maybe to inform the public. Uh, the ordinance says, an ordinance authorizing the safe- Service Safety Director to accept bids where necessary. What triggers that? What, what is the, the amount?
The design-
Or maybe it's not that easy, but-
Sure, no, it's, it is. I mean, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. When the design professional, whether it's an engineer, an architect, registered in the state of Ohio, depending upon the type of thing that you're working on, their opinion of probable cost, uh, is greater than fifty thousand dollars. Uh, at that point, um, you're required to bid it. Um, if the design professional does not believe that it's going to be that amount, then you can direct select. Now, in many cases, we shop that, I mean, we don't just pick somebody and ask them to price it at forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Uh, we, we will go and say, okay, give us a quote on this, uh, but it's not a formal bid process.
Thank you.
Okay, if no other comments or questions, we'll move on to a resolution for third reading, and this is the one that will pass tonight, we hope, with a vote. This is Resolution three twenty-two, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is introduced by councilmember Crowell.
Uh, thank you, uh, President Isley. Um, as discussed in committee and at first reading, this is, uh, um, done annually. This is for Athens Township, uh, at two point six zero mils, and Canaan Township at two point four zero mils. Uh, thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion for approval, and do we have a second? Second, okay, we do. All those in, and are there any questions or comments? All those in, uh, favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the resolution is approved. We now have a one-reading resolution. This is our five twenty-two. It's a resolution of support to update the Athens City Code to reflect gender-neutral language, introduced by all members of council. And I'll give it a little bit of background information, but this is really, uh, in part, large part, the work of several, uh, very dedicated, uh, people. Um, the, the mayor, I think, did the initial, uh, review of some of our code to make it gender-neutral. We were, um, also assisted by councilmember McCary, working with some graduate students at the university, law director Eliason, and our couns- clerk of council, Debbie Walker, um, spent hours and hours and hours poring over, um, all of these changes that must be meticulously made, uh, to be then uploaded to our, um, code. So we're very thankful for all this work. So councilmember McCary, do you have any comments?
Sure, thank you. Uh, folks recognize that in two thousand twenty-two, we need to do as much as we can towards gender equity and other forms of expressing commitment to diversity and inclusion. So this effort to update unnecessarily gendered language in municipal code included examples such as changing from the presumed gender of city officials, of he and his, to, uh, more gender-neutral terms, they, them. Also, objects, um, and positions such as man-made or fireman changed to manufactured or firefighter. And I would like to thank, uh, several members of a works group, um, from Ohio University who collaborated and used their talents, uh, in linguistics and other areas, um, to help make this possible. Lyndon Caldwell was an LGBT Center graduate student staff member. Venus Rittenberg, a undergraduate student staff member at the LGBT Center. Remington Burwell, who was serving, serving as Vice President of Graduate Student Senate. Jean Dockery, who was serving as LGBT Affairs Commissioner of Graduate Student Senate. Lavina Cooley, who was serving as LGBT Affairs Commissioner of Undergraduate Student Senate. Ryan Goodman, who was serving in Student Senate, and Molly Pennington, who was serving in Student Senate as well. So thanks to all those who have participated in this important effort to change what has been historically very unnecessarily gendered language.
Okay, and this being a one-reading resolution, would you like to make the motion to approve?
Sure, I would love to move that we adopt, uh, oh five twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify, oh, Mayor Patterson, yep.
I have a question, uh, councilmember McCary, um, you know, as, as we were going through and trying to identify things, as you indicated, you know, the things that are in there, like manhole cover, you know, and, and when you're doing this level of search, so many different things come up. But there was also a couple other items that I had highlighted for you. Are they in here as well? One of which was, you know, the mayor having the authority to permit, um, I think it was fairs, circuses, uh, monster and freak shows, and I asked that we strike those terms out as well because those are, um, certainly, um-
Updated.
Need, not, yeah, need to be gotten rid of. Um, you know, from the language that's in. And then there was another item that I had come across, which had to do with drinking ages. Um, that again, that, too, was completely out of step with federal and state law.
We're, we're going to be making those changes later. We made a decision on that, to just, to just do the gender.
So this is perfect, okay, I just wanted to know, I don't want those other ones to get lost because they're certainly stigmatizing, um-
She has a mind like a steel trap, and she will not forget. I can vouch for it, after fifteen years.
I think we all could. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for reminding us, too, so we don't, so we don't forget it. Okay, so we have a motion in second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries, and the resolution is approved. We now have announcements, another business. Now, this has been a general, um, business meeting, uh, we did have a committee meeting to begin with. Next week, our second Monday, uh, in August, will be a committee meeting. And so if committee chairs have items that they are wanting to place on the agenda, please let our clerk of council know by Wednesday, so that we have time to adequately, uh, prepare the materials and, and publish the agenda ahead of time. so that we have time to adequately, uh, prepare the materials and, and publish the agenda ahead of time. Are there any other announcements at this point that other people want to make, need to make? Okay. Uh, do you have one, Mayor? I wasn't sure. Do you have any other announcements?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, we do have a motion. We, we will need a motion for two separate items, with the first one being the, uh, approval of the May and June financial reports, which were distributed to all members of council.
Go move. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and those, uh, financial reports have been approved. And then we have a motion to accept the May and June credit card transactions. Uh, those were distributed to council members and, uh, have been, have been reviewed.
No moves.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and those reports, those credit card transactions have been, uh, approved also. And we now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. And I know that many of you are here tonight in support of, um, uh, city and community awareness on reproductive rights. And so, what I would like to do is back up and ask, is there anybody else who's wanting to speak for up to three minutes on a topic that is not about that? So, we can give that person a chance to give their three-minute pre- uh, talk if they want to. Okay. So, what we will do is move forward, and I'd like to ask, um, I know that, that, um, we, uh, saw the, uh, Facebook postings and have, uh, heard about the, um, the, um, items that, uh, you are wanting to share with council tonight, and I would ask, is there one person who is a spokesperson who would like to be speaking on behalf of you tonight? Is there one person that could perhaps lead us off and summarize? And if what you'll do is, you may have noticed when Mr. Train stood up, he gave his name and address, and if he was representing a group. So, if you could do the same for us, and what we do is we set the timer for three minutes, and it will go move from green to yellow to red, and because, uh, there may be some other people who wish to speak after you, um, we ask that you respect that three minutes. So, um, we'll go ahead and start, so if you can give us, start by giving us your name and address.
My name is Ari Faber. I live on Meadow Lane. I work for United Campus Ministry Center and am affiliated with Athenians for Bodily Autonomy. As elected leaders in our community, we, the residents of Athens, ask you to vow to refrain from using limited criminal legal system resources to criminalize personal medical decisions. We ask you to formally and in writing pledge to the residents of Athens the following. One, that you will decline to use resources to criminalize reproductive health decisions. Two, the Athens legal system will refrain from prosecuting those who seek, provide, and/or support abortions. Three, you will uphold your ethically-bound commitment to protect the well-being and safety of all members of our community. Four, you will pass a resolution to deprioritize enforcement of abortion laws and de-penalize abortion. As elected officials, you have a responsibility to insu- ensure that your limited resources, backed by the Athens residential taxpayer, are focused on efforts to prevent and address serious crimes rather than enforce abortion bans that divide our community, create untenable choices for patients and healthcare providers, and a rogue trust in the justice system. Athens City Code nine point zero six point two zero, cannabis laws and penalties, sets precedent law in Athens to decrease penalties, including fines and court costs for misdemeanor marijuana offenses. Columbus City Council President Proten Elizabeth Brown said, "No one is free and no one is equal without control over their own bodies, lives, and futures," before leading an ordinance de-penalizing abortion that was adopted in Columbus. The ordinance was voted on last Monday, July twenty-fifth, and was adopted unanimously. Please take into consideration that to best promote public safety, prosecutors must be perceived by their communities as trustworthy, legitimate, and fair. These are values that would be undermined by the enforcement of laws that criminalize deeply personal decisions, harm those most in need of our help, and force unnecessarily difficult and traumatizing decisions on many in our community.
Thank you. And I will do one other explanation. We very much appreciate your being here tonight and, uh, respect your concerns, and we will take them under consideration. However, I just wanted to make you aware, I remember the first time I came to city council and I made a, I talked at the podium, and I was very nervous, and it's like I didn't get any response. So, this moment is an opportunity to make comment, and so we're not here to be involved in discussion like we were in the committee meeting tonight, but it's not that we're not listening, um, but we do, we do want to hear these comments, but we won't be engaging in discussion tonight. So, it's more an opportunity for you to read the comments. Um, I would ask, um, if there are others who would like to speak, um, that, uh, feel free to come up and do the same thing, to announce your name and address. I will share with you that if there are other points in addition to the background information and the actual petition, um, items that you read, that's very helpful for us. If you're repeating it, um, a- a- again, that's not particularly useful for everybody's time tonight. So, if you have new comments to make, we'd welcome you to come up and, uh, speak. Hi.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Aubrey Crummert. I live on Shelley Drive in Athens County, and I'm a member of Athenians for Bodily Autonomy. By now, I'm sure you're aware that a sexually assaulted ten-year-old child had to be taken across state lines to receive a legal abortion this summer because Ohio has criminalized abortion post-six weeks into pregnancy, at which point an embryo is roughly the size of a grain of rice. Ohio's abortion ban makes no exceptions for race or incest. The impacts of this horrifying law are enormous. In twenty-twenty-one alone, Ohio's Children's Advocacy Centers saw six thousand seven hundred seventeen cases of sexual abuse of children, ranging in age from zero to eighteen years old. Fifty-two girls under the age of fifteen had abortions in Ohio in twenty-twenty, when abortion was still accessible to them. Now it isn't. And Republicans in our state legislature aim to take their cruelty even further, having proposed bills that would recognize embryos as legal persons from the moment of fertilization onwards, and thus regard some forms of birth control, some routine parts of IVF, and all methods of abortion at all stages of pregnancy as felony murder, for which punishments include years of imprisonment, multi-thousand-dollar fines, and loss of many civil rights and opportunities. We must note that most abortion patients are already needy by many metrics. According to the Guttmacher Institute, seventy-five percent of abortion patients in two thousand fourteen were low-income. Forty-nine percent were living at less than the federal poverty level, and fifty-nine percent had at least one child already. We must understand that what our state is doing now is forcing struggling people deeper into poverty while criminalizing paths out of it. What will this mean for the people of Athens County, a place where the poverty rate is nearly twice the national average? While our country's poverty rate ranges from twenty-two to fifty-four percent, depending on whether we include students in that calculation, it's imperative to include students in any discussion of criminalizing abortion. According to Rain, twenty-six point four percent of undergraduate women experience sexual assault. Knowing this, what teenager would choose Ohio University where, if raped, she'd be forced to carry that pregnancy to term or risk being charged with murder? If, say, she were to choose to take the FDA approv- approved abortion pills, which she could order online using a VPN or Tor web browser to protect herself from surveillance and could ingest legally-
Can I finish? If you're, if you could finish, summarize it.
In half the states of this supposedly free country, across the nation in twenty-fourteen, seventy-two percent of abortion patients were under thirty. Um, since I've been speaking for nearly three minutes, over three minutes now, another ABA member will continue the speech. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Louise Stewart. I'm at eighteen North College Street, and I'm a member of Athenians for Bodily Autonomy. And I was gonna add on to that last stat about how more than seventy percent of abortion patients in twenty-fourteen were under thirty. Over half the population of Athens is under thirty. So, let's keep this in mind as we think about how the demographics might change if we start investigating miscarriages, which would be a necessary step in criminalizing abortion. Um, at twenty-fourteen rates, one in four women will get an abortion by the age of forty-five. Though I haven't needed one yet, I don't like those odds, so I've already started looking for employment opportunities in states that aren't criminalizing healthcare. That was a federally protected right for half a century and remains legal in most industrialized nations in the modern world. In January, a twenty-six-year-old woman in Starr County, Texas, went to a hospital for treatment. Hospital staff contacted law enforcement to report the woman's symptoms, and the sheriff's office pursued a murder charge against the young woman, who was indicted in a secret grand jury proceeding where only the DA's office was permitted to present evidence. In April, this woman, who was younger than I am, was arrested on charge of homicide for self-induced abortion, and her bond was set at five hundred thousand dollars. She spent two nights in jail before advocates posted bail from the Repro Legal Defense Fund and took up her case. A judge has since dismissed the felony charge against the patient who had sought medical care. What a way to use taxpayer dollars. According to the Texas Tribune, quote, "The case shines a light on the huge and often unchecked power that local prosecutors wield in deciding which cases to pursue, what charges to push for, and what evidence to present to grand juries," end quote. This unevenly wielded power will become only more consequential in the post-Roe landscape, a landscape so unstable, arbitrary, and undemocratic that I search the internet each day to find out what my rights are as a resident of Ohio. I can't afford lawyers or babies. The stipend I received for teaching three courses at OU last year was fifteen thousand dollars after health insurance. In other words, my annual income is less than the hospital bill some of my friends have received after delivery of their children. I shudder to imagine what criminalizing abortion will mean for my students, many of whom are amassing tens of thousands of dollars of debt to earn degrees in hopes of charting their own paths in life. They have not chosen OU for the opportunity that forced pregnancy may bring, although our state rep, Jean Schmidt, disgustingly called rape, quote, "an opportunity," no matter how young she is, end quote. As a survivor of intimate partner violence, that was difficult to escape alive and would have been even more dangerous had I been pregnant, since the leading cause of death of pregnant women in the US is murder. I'm horrified by our legislator's statement. Forced pregnancy is regarded as a crime against humanity by the UN Human Rights Committee, the International Criminal Court, and Amnesty International, for a lot of good reasons. Meanwhile, thanks to the thoughtless, backward, out-of-touch cruelty of our state legislators, Ohio is becoming the kind of place humanitarians around the world are pointing to with alarm and wishing they could help. So, I'd like us all here tonight to reflect on what it means to be a neighbor in the post-Roe era. Please sit with this question. Imagine your loved ones in a horrific situation from which they might turn to you for help. What's the ethical thing to do? I believe that neighbors don't let neighbors slip into the shadows of a police state for making their own healthcare decisions or for defending others' rights to do so. In these frightening times, let's stick together, Athens. The last thing I'll add here, if there's time, is just an aside to those who might downplay the magnitude of childbearing and might suggest that one could simply give up their baby for adoption. It would be unspeakably agonizing for the rest of my life and would go against my moral code to bring into the world a child I cannot afford to parent. As a human being whose body alone could grow the embryo into a fetus and could birth the potential baby made of my DNA, my moral compass should be the principal authority honored in these deeply personal and painful matters.
Good evening. My name is Agnes. I live on Marietta Avenue in Athens, and I'm a member of Athenians for Bodily Autonomy. We're here tonight to ask all local officials to use your offices for good. Please pledge to do everything in your power to protect abortion patients, providers, practical support networks, and advocates from criminalization under unwelcome new laws, which, to which we do not consent. Please join us in imploring our county's prosecuting attorney, Keller Blackburn, to sign the Fair and Just Prosecution Statement, signed by Cuyahoga County Prosecutor Michael O'Malley, Columbus City Attorney Zach Klein, and ninety other elected prosecutors, who are united with us in calling the criminalization of abortion care, quote, "a mockery of justice," on, end quote. In their joint statement, these nearly a hundred authorities from more than thirty states agree that enforcing abortion bans runs counter to their sworn obligation to protect the safety and well-being of their communities. Since it would erode trust in the legal system, divert resources from the enforcement of serious crime, and, among other consequences, lead to the re-traumatization and criminalization of victims of, of sexual violence. One in three women is assaulted in her lifetime. As we all know, Ohio's abortion ban makes no exception to rape. According to the National Center for Injury Prevention and Control, there are at least four point eight million intimate partner-related rapes and/or assaults in the US each year. That horrifying figure is more than five times the number of abortions induced annually under Roe. Yet, instead of trying to help us live safe, healthy, violent, street-free lives of, of, full of opportunities, the state is now joining our abuses in taking away our bod- bodily autonomy and in threatening our lives. But each individual in a position of power has agency and responsibility, which means you have culpability if you do not choose to protect us. This is a time for civil disobedience. We know that justice is on our side, and we're not alone in saying so. In July, Cleveland's mayor made the following premises. Cuyahoga County prosecutors will not bring criminal charges for abortion ban violations. Investigating such cases will be the lowest priority for city resources. And Cleveland City Council will set up a hundred thousand dollar fund to pay for lodging and travel for residents who obtain legal out-of-state abortions. Cincinnati's mayor has made similar statements and plans. And the Columbus City Council passed three pieces of pro-abortion legislation last week. It's time we hear and see pro-choice pledges and actions from Athens County officials. Recording? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Madeline Moore. I live on North Lancaster Street. I'm a member of Athenians for Bodily Autonomy. And like many others, I'm here to argue for Athens becoming an abortion sanctuary city. I'm here as a woman, and I'm here as a member of the queer community. I'm here because I am sick and tired of having to constantly defend my existence and my right for basic autonomy. I am tired of attempting to persuade people in power into acknowledging that I am someone, that the laws on paper that we pass have real consequences to real people. I am here because I am tired of the anxiety and the fear that comes with the constant threat that I and other people in my community are always just in one election cycle away from losing everything. And while I am tired of making arguments about my reasoning as to why half the US population deserves to keep one of their rights, I also know nothing gets done unless we all collaborate and talk and listen to each other. So, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I grew up in Pennsylvania, and the main reason I came to Athens was because I loved the message that Athens and Ohio University spread about diversity, inclusion, and the power of community. And I really loved OU. I've loved the time I spent in Athens. I worked at the LGBT Center with MICA. I know a lot of people here. I know Dr. Solve, like, um, and I've loved Athens. I love living here. But in the same way that America cannot claim to be the land of the free while repealing our freedoms, Athens and OU cannot spout these progressive messages of social justice and inclusion while simultaneously being silent and complicit in the suffering of its citizens. In about three weeks, students will come back to campus. And while this is a time in many of their lives to learn new things about themselves and the world around them in a mostly carefree manner, many of those students are scared. Many are already regretting coming to college and being scared they might be assaulted or might end up accidentally pregnant. They need to know that the people of OU and the Athens officials really do support them. They need to know it's not just a marketing campaign when we talk about inclusion and safety and respect and empathy. And if you do think that this abortion- And if you do think that this abortion issue will not affect the Athens community, I hate to tell you that the statistics don't agree with you like we've heard here tonight. Make no mistake that continuing to make abortion inaccessible will cause higher dropout rates at Ohio University, which is already struggling with admission rates and keeping students here, and this has the potential to greatly affect our crowded and overwhelmed foster care system in Ohio. Passing this bill is your chance to make a real and impactful statement that you care. Thank you.
I'm Madeline. I live on Avon Place, and I'm probably the only person here who is not a member of the Athenian Member for Bodily Autonomy. I am, however, an EMT and firefighter for the past four years, and I currently work for Athens County EMS, where I proudly serve my friends and neighbors. As an EMT, I quickly become intimately acquainted with people who are often having one of the worst days of their lives. Their trust is implicit, and they divulge the secrets that brought them to needing to call 911. Sometimes abuse that was hidden is revealed, often it's drug use or carelessness, many times it's something illegal. But they are protected while in my care regardless, not only physically, but to a certain degree legally as well. In fact, except in cases of child and elder abuse, for which I am mandated by law and conscience to report, I cannot divulge medical information to anyone other than to other medical professionals who will assume care of the patient unless criminal activity is being investigated and a subpoena is issued. In my four years as an EMT, I have only encountered one case where a person tried to abort at home. She and her boyfriend were fifteen and living in a rural area, so didn't have access to an abortion without getting their parents involved. But they had the internet and determination. They didn't have a wire hanger, but they did have access to spools of wire found in one of their father's workshops. When the patient started bleeding profusely, they panicked and called 911. We were quickly able to take her to the hospital, where they were able to stop the bleeding and save her life. I wonder what will happen now that abortion is unavailable to so many more people. I wonder what will happen when these foolhardy attempts become not only dangerous but illegal. How likely would it be that someone would wait until it's too late instead of calling 911 as soon as they realized they messed up? Will fear of prosecution relate, result in delayed care, as I have seen it do in so many other cases of illegal activity that resulted in harm? Abortion bans do not stop abortion, they only create barriers to care. And since one of my responsibilities as a healthcare provider is patient advocacy, it would be a breach of the trust of the community I serve to not advocate for their autonomy now.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak tonight?
My name's Heather Heisler. I live on Garfield Avenue. In Ohio, in 2019, nine hundred and twenty-seven infants died before reaching their first birthday, an infant mortality rate of six point nine per one thousand live births in Ohio. Black infants are almost three times more likely to die than white infants in Ohio. Ohio's maternity mortality rate is eighteen percent higher than the national average, with twenty-three point eight deaths per one hundred thousand births. The risk of maternal death is even higher among blacks, who are two to three times more likely to die. Fifty-nine percent of these deaths are preventable. At the end of 2021, there were three thousand one hundred and seventy-five children awaiting adoption in Ohio. On any given day in Ohio, nearly sixteen thousand children are being cared for away from their parents. More than nine thousand of them are living in foster parents. Surated when they reach the age of twenty-one, only sixty percent said they had a high school diploma or a GED. Forty-six percent said they had jobs. Just twelve percent said they were in school, and thirty-seven percent, double the national average, said they had been incarcerated. In 2020, just under four hundred twenty-three thousand children lived in poverty in Ohio, representing a child poverty rate of sixteen point eight percent. Ohio children in female-headed households with no husband present are more than five times as likely to be poor. And Ohio women earn, on average, seventy-nine cents for every dollar a man makes. On average, women in Ohio are paid twenty-one percent less than their male counterparts. Banning abortions before six weeks, when most women don't even know they're pregnant, will increase the number of dead mothers and not the number of dead babies, the number of children in foster and other types of care away from their parents, the number of orphans. I'm so sorry, I'm a terrible public speaker.
That's all right. You take your time. It's all right.
The number of mothers living in poverty, the number of children living in poverty, and on and on. The UN Human Rights Experts have denounced the decision by our Supreme Court of the United States to strike down Roe as, you know, forced pregnancy and motherhood, leaving legal access to abortion as, quote, "essential healthcare and pivotal to women's enjoyment of the full spectrum of human rights." And I would just add that, although I am a member of Athenians for Bodily Autonomy, I am also here as a mother to two children. And I do believe that Athens should be an abortion sanctuary city, knowing the, uh, the weight of motherhood and pregnancy. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Mackenzie Price, and I live on Palmer Street, and I'm reading this on behalf of Chelsea. I'd like to thank the independent citizens who have shown up today to present data, both science and experience-based. Today, you've heard testimony about the consequences of overturning of Roe v. Wade, and you've been given perhaps some of it, new information that will inform action. Presented with evidence that harm reduction techniques work indisputably in favor of the greater community, and that prohibitory measures create a larger threat in terms of healthcare, economic disparity, mental wellness, addiction, and several issues already prominent in Appalachia. I propose that this council, as public servants and representatives, has a moral obligation to consider the presented speeches before them as basis to draft a resolution to establish Athens as sanctuary city for reproductive rights. What this would look like, in my opinion, would be an agreement from the city to not use valuable resources to seek out or prosecute those who provide or attain safe medical abortion. The mission statement of the Athens County Court explicitly includes a fair and equitable access to justice. If members of this council have been sufficiently persuaded by the words, passions, stories of those who had the courage to come and ask that our home be a place of refuge and asylum for those faced with one of the most difficult decisions a person could face, I would urge them to step up to help define and create a safe space to grant the citizens of this county the autonomy to make decisions that will impact their safety, their privacy, and overall livelihood. And then, um, for me, I guess, with Heather, like, crying, you know, I think that's how a lot of us feel, very emotional about this. And as a Ohio University student, I do feel that we need to decriminalize abortion. It's in the best interest of Athens. Kids are having sex, that's very obvious, and it's gonna happen at some point, and I think that's what we need to do in Ohio University and in Athens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Mayanoff. I live at United Lane. I'm just calling to put it forward to all of you that we are living in the very beginning moments of decline. We are seeing the rise of white Christian nationalism happening in every sector of our communities, in our governments, and in the laws that are being, you know, brought forth to our communities. I urge all of you to consider this. It starts off so insidious, it starts off so small, it starts off by, you know, in the grounds of Christianity, in the grounds of white Christian nationalism, quite frankly, punishing loose women for their sexual impropriety. It starts there, but as a queer woman, as someone who has seen in this community the, you know, full-on demonization of the population I belong to, they will come for us next. And it sounds, that sounds like I'm lighting a fire that isn't ready to ignite yet, but like, it, it, when I see on Facebook, and I see on Reddit, and I see on anywhere else, the prevailing theme is if you don't want to be punished for having an abortion, don't have sex. And that's just so, I don't know. It is, it is a brutal breakdown of the basic liberty of people to live lives that they find satisfying, because it goes against the rules that people don't even uniformly follow. So to everyone sitting here who's like, you know, observing this, in your communities, when people raise these points, argue with them. It starts there. Otherwise, we are going to be left to a highly radicalized, highly mobile political minority that will see our rights shrink, and they will come for every sector that breaks from their, from their belief system. I say this as somebody who was watching as a member of this community for my entire life, minus four years I spent in California. The most evil people I've ever met have come bearing the cross or bearing a nationalist flag. It is, it is not that complex. I just want you all to know this, because, like I said, we, I feel that we are watching the decline of Western liberal democracies, and I want to put that forward to all of you. If we don't start with things like this right now, if we don't work at the first level, which is our community, we're part of the problem. And that's why, I mean, there are so many people here tonight. These are people that don't have any power in themselves, but they're here to, you know, make a difference in the best way they can. That's all I wanted to say. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Hans Boytner. I'm a board member for United Campus Ministries, and I've been working with ABA recently. And I, uh, I live on Rarden. And I know abortion is a multi-layered issue, and, but tonight I just want to focus on one main point, which is the establishment of Athens as a sanctuary city, and why we should do so. First off, there's already a precedent being set by Columbus and Cleveland. We wouldn't be the first to do so. And there's already a clear showing of desire by the majority of the populace here. The laws of the DA, it would require additional expenditure of our city resources. We would have to use more taxpayer money. It would be an additional burden to our police force, additional consideration and time by our prosecutors and our legal system, and it would affect the consideration of students and businesses to come to our city and our state. But with all this, I think, right now is a huge opportunity for our city council, because if we were to establish Athens as a sanctuary city, we would spend less money, we would reduce the burden on our police force and our legal system, and we would essentially, you know, market our city and our university as somewhere people would want to travel to. And the huge opportunity here is that for all these good things, all we need from the city council is a promise to do nothing. So I hope you'll consider this. Thank you.
I appreciate you all being here tonight. I would ask that if you have a copy of the petition, that you would leave that with us, so that we have the, uh, the final draft of that. It'd be helpful. All right. Thank you so much for being here, for sharing your concerns. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Last call. I wasn't sure if you were getting up to leave or to speak. Okay. All right. If not, then what we will do is have a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight.
So moved.
A second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for adjourning the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Meeting stands adjourned. It's eight forty-two PM. Thank you so much.